All right, we're gonna go ahead and open the Planning Commission meeting for January 19th, 2023 at 6:31. Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll go ahead and head over to Angela for a roll call of commissioners.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Melcher.
Here.
Commissioner Wolfius. Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Durney.
Present.
Commissioner Bowman. And Commissioner Branson. Sorry. We have a forum, six present and one absent.
All right, I'd officially like to welcome Mr. Branson to the Planning Commission. Thank you for joining us. I know you did virtual on the last one, but it's. Yeah. Did Angela run over the little microphone with you? Okay. Make sure we're all on the recording. All right, so this is the portion of our meeting open for public comment. So anybody in the audience wishing to address the commission on things that are not on our agenda for the evening, this would be the time to do so. And after you have a seat, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Joshua Victor, 44004 Wiley Creek, Sweet Home Oregon, 97386. So I was here to talk about some carports. So as we know, carports are on the requirements for when you're putting in any new home, having a carport for at least a single car parking carport, which I have never really been a big fan of, just because all my carports end up looking like this. And with people parking outside of them, all pretty much everywhere. Like that's what they look like, and then this is what it looks like for places that don't have them. Some more.
Can I ask you really quick too, at the end, if you would leave those with Angela?
All of them. And this one, once again, with people not parking in them. And then I brought some of places without them, how they look. The four houses all, all pretty clean, they all stay relatively clean without carports. But um, so anyway, we were going down on Yucca Street, we just put in six new homes and we put carports in. And after I had rented out, well, first, like I said, I hate carports just because of the anyway, but I know I have to have them for my inspections for everything to get signed off. So I went over there after my first tenant was moved into my, the first house, well, first three houses. And one of the tenants had put a basketball hoop up and moved the carports to the front of their house. And I was like, well, it can't be in the front of the house, it has to be so far away from the road, all this stuff. And they were like, well, we just don't really want it here, so can you remove it? And I was like, yeah, so I grabbed it, removed it. And while I was there, the tenant next door came to me and asked me like, hey, we can't park, we've got it, our cars can fit next to each other, but with this carport that can't fit here, if you're taking theirs out, can you just take mine too? And so I grabbed that carport and then another tenant came in, and I grabbed three of them. I have three tenants that asked me to, and I was like, well, you know, if this is gonna be a thing, I'll just grab them, remove them all in a day. Apparently I'm not supposed to do that, so it's a violation of code or whatever. So like I said, it's not a huge deal to me, but to like all my tenants, they, I went over there to tell them, Angela told me, okay, you're not allowed to remove those carports, they have to stay because it goes with the permits. And then when I went to tell my tenants that I was gonna be bringing them back, they all wrote me letters asking if they could, you know, not have them. And I told them the best I could do is bring them to you guys to ask, you know what I mean? And so for me, I'm the property owner, I don't, I don't like them personally, but if my tenants don't want them either, like is this a completely necessary thing to have to have them? That's what I'm here for. So I mean, it doesn't take, if it has to go, if they have to go back, it'll take me a day to put them back, it's not a big deal for me. But like I said, in the interest of like trying to keep everybody happy and keeping it clean, I wanted to know if there's something I can do to just keep them off, or if this is a block thing where I have to have them on there. So like I said, I brought their letters and I brought their pictures and stuff, but like I said, I just figured I would come in and ask, and like I said, I told them I can't guarantee it either way, but the least I could do is come and ask. So that's what I'm here for, and that's what I wanted to know. Instead of, if you guys say that I have to go put it back, then I'll just tell them all that that's just the way it is. But like, I mean, if you go over there, like they're, all the neighborhood kids are playing basketball on that basketball court, like there's no asphalt, any, there's no street, there's no real asphalt anywhere. So I mean, I don't know, like I said, I figured the worst case scenario, I could come and ask and see what, what you're gonna have to say, so.
Okay, I do know that as part of a lot of new building permits, code does require covered off-street parking, whether it be a carport or garage.
And in the future, I will only do enclosed carports, just because then if they have all their stuff in there, they can just close the door and it's all hidden. You know, like if I ever do another carport, it will be an enclosed carport, I won't be doing any open carports in the future. But I mean, from where I'm at, like I said, I just wanna solve this for Angela and for me and my tenants, get everything all good, so that way we can move on moving on. But like I said, I figured the least I could do is ask for them, so.
Yeah, and it's definitely something that we can look into a little bit farther, maybe spend some time as a commission and discuss this a little more. I know that a lot of things are cut and dry. As much as we want things to be black and white, it doesn't always work out. It looked like from your pictures that concerns were both size and collection of doing it. I do know how that goes, I have fingers. And honestly, my carport's not the cleanest, so. I can't point to your fingers.
Microphone please.
I would suggest that we put this on our agenda for a little work session at our next meeting. And that we give Josh a reprieve until we resolve it. And I know this probably isn't the place for opinions, but I wholeheartedly agree that most open carports turn into an aesthetic mess. I can show you many of them around town. So can we work on it?
I can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think that, you know, your presentation to us tonight is gonna be such a, we could resolve it tonight.
No, absolutely. I just, like I said, if you need anything from me, just, you know, if you have my numbers and stuff, just feel free to call me or whatever, if there's anything I can do or like I said, it's just 80% of mine end up turning into that, and I'm literally constantly trying to police it. And like the only reprieve I really have is to turn them into code, which code violation goes against the property owner. So I'm literally essentially turning myself in for a dirty carport. So like, like I said, it's just, I, I don't know what else, but like I said, if, whatever you guys decide, I will go with either way. I just, like I said, wanted to, I told them I'd make the presentation and whatever happens, happens, but like I said, that's, that's pretty much it.
So it would likely require a code amendment, and that's a pretty in-depth to do that.
I don't know.
I don't think it would qualify for a variance of any sort.
I know. This specifically wouldn't because that piece specifically talking about was a plan approval?
Yeah.
So that's not moving forward at the plan approval.
Yeah.
But I can give these to.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And I actually have a question. So you mentioned in your presentation that you knew that they needed to be there for code. And instead of explaining that to your tenants, because you don't like them, what you decided to do was take them down. So what you're asking us to do now is help you avoid having to follow code because you decided not to tell your tenants that when they asked you about the carports, because you didn't like them. So my question is, why should we make an exception to the code and for all of our other property owners for you? And what, you know, what real cost does it give to your tenants to put them back, except for the loss of the space that they hope to have if you could remove the carport?
So for me, I'm not wanting just an exception for me, I'm wanting an exception for everybody. I'm not wanting it for just me, I'm wanting, like, so I do want it for everybody in town, that's why, it's not like I wanted an exception. I just think that it's everywhere, and that this is what everybody has to do, that's why. Like I said, it's not, it wasn't, it's not a big deal, I can put them all back in a day, it's not like it, it only takes, they're all pre-built, so they just set them up for acres, it's not, like they said, a very strenuous thing. So like I said, I, I'm not trying to ask for exceptions, I'm just trying to solve the problem that I see, and that's why the only thing I'm presenting.
You'd like us to take another look at our code.
So Angela, what's the next step in that process to request a change to the code?
There would have to be a text amendment to the code, and it has to be filed, application has to, it goes through planning commission, be canceled for approval. As any of the comprehensive changes on changing process.
Yeah, so someone has to submit an application for that process?
Correct.
Okay.
And just, just also for a clarification, that if you were to do a zone change for, to change the wording for future, anything before that zone change still has to comply with the code that it was approved. And so anything moving forward would be able to go with that new code, but anything past has to go with the code of when it was approved. So it can't, you can't, without a variance, and this wouldn't qualify for variance, so just, I wanna make that clarification.
Well, it's definitely something we can discuss more in depth and try and prevent problems in the future from occurring of this nature.
One more thing to add is that the Planning Commission does have the authority to initiate text amendments also, just like we're doing with ordinance or the, the text amendment we're looking at at the next meeting regarding food trucks. Where that, it's the same process as that. So if after your deliberations, you see that there needs to be some change, you can initiate that as well.
Maybe we could look at some other jurisdictions and see if this is something they allow?
And.
And reasons why they might allow it or might not allow it?
We can prepare that for future, the next meeting.
In your spare time, Angela? Thank you.
All right, does anybody else on the commission have any questions for Mr. Victor?
Well, welcome Todd, good to see you on the board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you everybody.
All right, if anybody else has any public comment wishing to be heard, not on the agenda for tonight? All right, so we will go ahead and look at our meeting minutes from January 5th, 2023. Anybody have any corrections or amendments to make to the Planning Commission meeting?
I just have a little procedural due. Mr. Branson was not at the December meeting, so he voted a eight to approve the minutes, but he wasn't there, so.
He was virtually? Oh, then in December, yes, okay.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, aside from the observations of Commissioner Durney, does anybody else have any corrections to the meeting minutes?
I would make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 5th, 2023 as the minutes.
We have a motion and a second, we are all in the same room, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Moving on. So we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for, I don't know what we wanna, it's not an application, would it be, I guess we just go with application? As far as opening this?
Yes, this is a kind of, this is a little bit of a different one. So I did the staff report, so we, the application is technically the letter that Mr. Ruby sent in. We did a staff report based on just the criteria of vacation, by the way, it's not like the rest of our R1 or R2 criteria, we have the basis of the criteria. Joe Grayville is here tonight, and let me introduce, soon to be Joe's replacement, Ryan Wade, he is our engineering head, so he will be taking over for Joe. So he is here tonight to just kinda see how the proceedings are, but Joe is here specifically because he has a lot of knowledge of this, so.
All right.
Just go through, if you have questions about the staff report.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open it as per a normal application. So we will go ahead and open the discussion for application VC.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry, thank you very much. Public hearing for application VC 22-01 at 6:44. This is an application to vacate an underdeveloped portion of Redwood Street in the city of Sweet Home Oregon. The portion of Redwood Street proposed to be vacated is a dead-end street, approximately 500 feet long, located north of Highway 20 and west of 53rd Avenue. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. That being read into record, do any of the commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this?
No.
Okay? Any conflicts of interest?
No.
I have none? Any ex parte information?
No.
All right, so we'll go ahead and go over to Angela for the staff report. No, you're fine. You will find that none of us judge you, you've got a lot on your plate.
No, it's one of those I'm trying to use the paper. I'm not sure how well that's looking out for me though. All right, for application VC 22-01 for the vacation of Redwood Street. Redwood Street, like I said, there's not a lot of criteria for vacations, it is, hasn't been used, there isn't actually any paved street there. If you look at it, all of this is a bank of blackberry, and so it was, you know, it was put in as a right-of-way. It is not in a floodplain, there are no wetlands on it. Currently, the homes and the parcels that bought it come through a private access easement, you can see through there, and down by the railroad tracks and come, come up in there, they, all of the lots have been using that. I did have a conversation with the railroad about any other properties in there, and they said that the approval of the access easement was for the properties, it didn't matter if they were divided or not. So no other permission needed, was needed for that. Currently, the property owners are in charge of maintaining that easement, and they will remain, that will remain if this is vacated. There are no sidewalks along 53rd Avenue, there's no development plans in that area yet, or sidewalks, and we'll probably talk a little bit more to that. Other than that, if you have any questions for us, there's not a lot criteria wise for
I guess my biggest concern was to make sure that all the properties had needed access.
Me too.
If this was to be removed, but it sounds like that's not an issue.
So they do all have legal recorded access, all of the properties? How many properties use that access, and how many do we allow to use a private easement?
So there will be, so private easement, easement itself, it's partially owned by the railroad, and so they have to grant part of it. And from my conversation, you can see right now, there is, and actually the, right above Redwood Street, that's actually, has been partitioned, so there's actually two lots. So there's five, six properties that access it. The easement.
How many do we allow, how many does our code allow to use a private easement? Is there any?
We don't have a limit, what we have a limit to now is if there are so many houses on it, then the road standards have to be brought up. What is there now is pre-existing. However, if one more house gets built on there, we do have new code of the private access easement that it needs to be brought up to local street standards, which is mostly just a paved width of 14 feet, doesn't need sidewalks, curves, it just has to have a paved width. So that's the only new standard that would apply to that if another house is being built on there. How it is currently, it's pre-existing, so if it remains the way it is right now, they would not need to do anything.
So the owner that owns that little triangle right there, that's called the dominant parcel? Is that right? No, the serviette, I get this mixed up. This, yeah, where the driveway that goes on that.
The little triangle?
The little triangle.
So this person, this property right here, this one?
Oh, yes. Yes.
This is owned by the same person in here. These will be combined, and when you vacate a street like this, it gets divided between all of the properties that, it's an automatic property line, just what it is.
Okay, so will these new lots access off that private easement also?
Correct.
And is that property owner who owns that little triangle, is she okay with that?
They all have to be in agreement in order to do this stuff.
Okay.
And it's my understanding from a city standpoint that this would not be a feasible street to develop because of the topography in the area?
No, and Joe can probably speak more to the condition of that right-of-way. Turn your mic on.
Does that drop off along 53rd, the entire length of that property?
Yes, pretty close to that, 20-foot drop-off on the roadway down to the yard.
In other words, from the, from the railroad right-of-way to the core engineer property, that's all a steep bank?
Well, from Redwood Street, it's a, it's a very steep bank. It's between 15 feet at the north end to about 20 feet at the south end of Redwood Street. It's, where the roadway is, that's a gradual slope from 53rd Avenue down to that central driveway width, but it's a very steep. It's a 20-foot drop in probably about 40 feet of run length, so it's a two-to-one slope. It would be way outside the city specification. To build a street there would take quite a bit of extra material, roadway base, and embankment. Probably extending half the length, probably.
There's no option to take an approach off of 53rd onto that property without going down that private easement?
No, because up at the junction of 53rd and 54th, there's a drop-off there.
There is.
Yeah, it's a little bit less than 20 feet, by much of.
Okay.
Really, where the only access going down there is that private driveway crosses the railroad grade and the other land. The, the house to the north of this area kind of blocks access from another private driveway and those three homes just above the core of engineers land on its, so there's no access through that, or not easy access to the area.
Okay.
All right, anybody else on the commission have any questions for the staff? Or I'm gonna go ahead and invite up our applicants that are here? We have our applicant in the room. If you would be willing to come forward after having a seat, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Bill Ruby, 28322 Kingsbury Road.
And if you could just quickly restate for the record the purpose of the application?
Well, as was mentioned, abording Redwood Street there, where Redwood Street is, like Joe says, it's, it's like this, in fact, you can't even walk up that hill. And so what we wanted to do, what we've basically done is separated that into three lots. And those three lots, once we can get houses in those three, it's already got one just about where the subject street is, is a little up in the corner of that, it's already got one there. The other two, there's a lot right where Redwood Street, that kind of a high-shaped thing, that's gonna be a lot, and then back in the, in the corner will be a lot. And we're hoping that between those three homes, it'll be about, just about a million dollars tax base for the city. That's our whole goal, to make some nice homes, make nice home buildings.
Do any of the planning commissioners have any questions for our applicant?
What is the agreement that you have with the easement owner or maintenance of that with the new homes coming?
We don't specifically have a maintenance agreement. John back here, he's one of the homeowners, and we've talked to the other two homeowners there, and they're all for setting up a maintenance.
They are.
And we just haven't, there's never ever been a maintenance agreement, but we will put one together.
Okay, great.
With the new homes, according to Angela, you're gonna have to develop that private right-of-way to higher standard.
Yeah, from what Angela was telling us, it has to be a 14-foot wide pavement coming down that easement, 14-foot wide pavement down to the bottom of it.
And you're okay with that?
And that would be whoever purchased these, lot number two or lot number three, would be responsible for doing that.
One other question that's a little unrelated, but you bring up the new tax base for the city. Have you given any thought to smaller lots with more houses?
Well, we have, but the problem with that is, in order to have that, we have to have a city street. And we can't build a city street, because in order to come off of Redwood, where Redwood is, we would have to build at least 150-foot-long street like this, where the ground goes like this for 30 feet, and out, we'd totally lose two lots. So it would, it would be, and there's no sewer down there, so all the sewer has to be pumped up to 53rd Street. And that's an extremely costly, we just did three of them, so.
I don't have any personal problem with vacating Redwood Street, but you know, as I look at your sketch, it looked to me like there could certainly be more homes.
It would be nice, but in that situation, I don't think it would ever fly, because we would have to bring, well, I don't even know how you do it, because like I say, Redwood Street is unbuildable. I mean, the, the cost of doing Redwood Street would be, you know, north of $85,000, $90,000, plus the pump stations to get everything up, and then you got rainwater, you got gutters, you got everything, has to be pumped up to 53rd, and it's just, it just wouldn't even be cost-effective.
Will these lots be served by city water and sewer, or septic?
No, everybody's on wells. Everybody down there that lives around that is all on, on septics.
Do you have septic approvals yet? Do you have septic approvals yet?
Yes, yes, that's all been done, but everything has to go straight up 20 feet to 53rd.
And I would imagine that's why, another reason why you couldn't have smaller lots, because of the distance between the lots and the septic.
So we figured if we could do it in three lots, that would make nice, big lots for the people to buy it, give it more of a, of a tax base, and nice homes would go in there.
Nice location.
I, I'm not trying to correct you on the septics, it's, there's not septics down there, it's, you're putting them on a pump station, right?
These, these three lots are all on pump stations. Everybody around that is.
Is on septics.
They're on septics.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Thank you Todd.
As it's in the city limits.
Yeah, in fact, everybody all the way to the dam and down in that round park area are all on septics, I believe. And in order to pipe city water down there to the substation, it was gonna be like, And in order to pipe city water down there to the substation, it was gonna be like $40,000, $30,000, $40,000?
Something like that.
Yeah.
The water line is on the other street, on 54th Avenue.
Oh.
There's nothing north of the railroad tracks on 53rd.
All right. Do any of our commissioners have any other further questions for the applicant? All right. Well, thank you for your time. Please stick around if you would.
Okay.
All right. At this time, we would ask if any opponent testimonies in the room wishing to speak, those in favor of the application? Is there none? Any opponent testimony wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any neutral testimony not wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard? There are none. We will close the public hearing for VC 22-01, especially amongst the planning commission, at 7:58. 6:58. Well, it sounds like pretty much all the stuff has been dealt with prior to us seeing this application, having to pump up all the sewer. If Redwood Street was actually created, the loss in real estate from that wouldn't really benefit anybody. They're gonna lose a ton of land. And if the vacation of the property allowed for Redwood would be divided amongst the property owners equally, does allow for better development in the area. And it sounds like they're on board for the 14-foot hard-surface pavement to access those lots. So.
Just to throw out some long, long-range thoughts. We have recently dealt with a street where the backyards were against the street. And there were some feelings among the commission that we should probably try to avert that in the future. You know, it might be 100 years from now, but would we ever be looking at a sidewalk along 53rd for developments that would be aesthetic to that street? Just another thought.
Well, based on the testimony and evidence from Mr. Grayville, it looks like we probably couldn't do anything on the east side of 53rd for sure, just because of the slope. So if there was a sidewalk on 53rd, it would have to be to the west. Is that correct?
The other way around.
Other way around. Sorry. The slope is on the west. Thank you. Yeah. Yep. So it would have to be on the other side.
I mean, at some point in the next 100 years, there is gonna be foot traffic on 53rd.
Mm-hmm.
I think we need to think about it.
So are you thinking we need to require them to put in the pedestrian?
I think we need to discuss it.
Okay.
It's definitely something to be discussed, but I think it would fall probably on the property owners on the opposite side from this development. I mean, has that ever been a case, where we've required the property owner to put in a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street from their development?
So the only analog I can think of is right now with the Willow Yucca LID that's moving forward. We have such a small, a narrow right-of-way in those areas where, and so we are only contemplating a sidewalk on one side in parts of that, but all of the neighborhood is contributing to payment for that, for that one side. So if there were to be an LID in this area to construct sidewalks, and you, and for topographical reasons or, you know, the amount of space you have, you would only, if you were only gonna do a sidewalk on one side, then you can justify having all those property owners pay into that infrastructure if it's all within the project. I mean, that's possible. In this case, there's, you know, who knows what can happen in the future, but there's sufficient room in that right-of-way that you probably could find a way to get a sidewalk in on both sides. You're just shifting the street a little bit. Right now, that would be a sidewalk to nowhere, because there's really no connectivity at all until you, sidewalks, until you get down to Main Street, I think. And so there's potential in the future for sidewalks on all of those streets, certainly.
You mentioned it's a sidewalk to nowhere, but you've got several homes there. You've got a school, you've got kids.
What I mean is just on this property, if it was only this property.
Yeah.
It would not connect. You need it to be more broad.
But I wonder if we shouldn't, you know, take a look at it, that there would be no remonstrance against an LID?
We typically do that when we have development that occurs where the street is not complete. We typically have agreements in place that when development will occur, when the, if the city has a project or the MLID, the property owner essentially says, "Yeah, I'm gonna be on board." And so that's certainly, that's something that's typically our practice with anybody who develops on a on a street that doesn't have anything developed yet.
Any other discussion questions amongst the commission? I understand what Henry's saying about wanting the sidewalks. You know, we've talked and talked and talked about trying to improve the pedestrian friendliness of Sweet Home, and it is definitely something that needs to be addressed. This one is a unique case, I think, in the fact that the topography on the west side is not conducive to a sidewalk, and if in future an LID was formed in the area, that it would have to be on the east side. And our paved access that we put in doesn't need a sidewalk until that we increase the number of lots that were in the area. And at that time, they would have to do at least a three-quarter street with sidewalk on one side if they were to develop this property more. Or could they continue with just the 14-foot paved?
Are you talking about the, it's a private access easement?
Right.
It will never be a pedestrian. So according to the new code, anything more than two on a private access easement has to be built to neighborhood street standards, which I got it up. So neighborhood street standards is the right-of-way width is 20 feet, probably with a seven-foot minimum number of lanes, two, so that makes it 14 feet. Median center not required, bike lane not required, parking width not required, curb not required. Planting strip that says three feet, sidewalk not required, system spacing 100 feet, speed 20 miles an hour. Those that's the neighborhood street standard. So it wouldn't have to be that squandered because of this private access easement. Currently what the new code says.
Let me throw out one other thought. If there was a no remonstrance clause, does that mean that if there was an LID that their vote would be based on lineal feet or not, or per owner? In other words, what I see there is that at some point in the future, however many years, is that there probably needs to be road improvement and maybe a sidewalk at least on one side, which I think can be doable. But also with a lot of LIDs, I think that we base that on a vote by those residents, sometimes based on a lineal foot, so, which means on the west side, there would be enough votes to completely oppose an LID.
Whether there's enough votes to oppose an LID depends entirely on the size of the LID. So if you limited the LID to just that one block, then certainly there would be enough votes there to. But if it was a project that consisted of the entire neighborhood, then you'd have more people involved.
So if the LID was 53rd, but it was from Army Corps of Engineer property to Main Street?
Sure. The other thing to keep in mind is if there was, if there was an LID that constructed complete streets and sidewalks in this area, it would, of course, not include their private access easement. And so the only road that it would involve that touches on these properties is 53rd. And so that stretch that you're seeing between the railroad tracks and where 53rd and 54th meet, that's the, on just the west side is where these properties would have, would be, if an LID went forward, that's the area where the properties would be responsible for that street being completed. But again, it depends on the size of the LID and all that. If you had a LID that encompassed, you know, all of this, the part of Redwood Street that you see there on the east and 54th Avenue and 53rd, et cetera, then certainly there's a lot more owners that would be involved. And usually you divide those up based, the costs are divided up based on linear foot for street improvements. And so that would all go into the calculation.
What is the overhaul, overall likelihood that if a major street improvement was to occur on 53rd to help access to Army Corps, the Army Corps of Engineers property, that the city would automatically install sidewalks as a part of that street improvement?
I find that pretty unlikely. We don't typically, we don't typically automatically include any street improvements. The main areas that the city puts street improvement funding are usually on, there's a lot of factors that are taken into account. Obviously, funding is first, whether we have the funding for something. But when the city makes a road or a sidewalk improvement, usually the number of citizens in the community that are using that, that could potentially use that area is part of the calculation. So if you had a street that's on a cul-de-sac, that's at the end of the line, that doesn't have anybody traveling through it, the city is less likely to put in citywide funding because it's seen as an improvement that only benefits just a couple people. And it seems to be unjust to use the taxpayer money from the entire city for that. And so usually the preferred angle there is an LID. If you have a thoroughfare that, you know, say it was Long Street, which is one of our arterials, then you're more likely to have a project that would be an entirely city-funded project. And it's a little bit unfair, but, you know, living on an arterial is not exactly a picnic either. So there's pros and cons for everyone.
Henry, I really appreciate you, like, thinking forward about the future of Sweet Home and thinking with that, like, forward-thinking plus layering in our housing needs analysis that we've been taking in. I mean, I can look at this lot map here, and I can see many other areas that may come in front of us over the next 50 years, six years, where we'll get to, there are lot improvements that might happen, big lots that may want to be divided, empty lots now that may want to be developed. There's at least six here that then, those will be conversations then that we'll be able to have about the sidewalk on 53rd and creating access for that, especially as, you know, more homes may be built near the school, et cetera. Those are important.
This has been a kind of neglected portion of Sweet Home, even before it was part of Sweet Home. But I think we need to think that at some time in the future, we're gonna be upgrading a lot of these streets and sidewalks.
We like to encourage people to think about LIDs as much as possible because in an area like this, that's really the preferred method for getting these improvements constructed. The only other way, the only other avenue, one that needs to be brought up since Foster Elementary is so close there, is there is, there is a grant program called Safe Routes to School that we typically put in applications for. Our priority recently has been the more heavily traveled areas, such as, you know, near the junior high being a major issue. But certainly around Foster, we could use more sidewalks, and those areas would be ripe for a grant application for that.
I would, I'd be in favor of the applicant and do grant them what they want, but I would also kind of like to see a non-remonstrance for the future. I don't know the rest of this commission. Thanks.
That's not something that we can necessarily include as a condition because by a street vacation, there's not really much. We don't have the same kind of leeway that we have with a conditional use or something to require conditions. But it is also something that comes into, when we receive applications for development, that comes into play. And we, like I said before, we typically require them.
And also, I wanted to say, our city attorney informed me we don't use non-remonstrance here. We do development agreements. So just to get the terminology correct, so it is called a development agreement here.
All right. So if there's no further discussion amongst the commission or questions for staff in regards to this application, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend the city council approve application VC 22-01, which includes adopting the bindings of practice to the staff report.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm staying. No, I'll say aye. It's okay.
It's completely your choice, Henry.
No, it's aye.
Okay.
I brought up enough issues.
They were very good issues, but thank you so much.
On your own record.
Yes. All right. Motion or application passes?
Just by way of information, to complete this request, there is an ordinance required. And so the next step is for this to go back to city council with an ordinance for them to approve. And our code requires an ordinance be read at three separate meetings. And so unfortunately, there's still time that's required to complete this.
But thank you. This is a new realm of information that we've been getting into. This is not something that happens, yeah, very, very rarely, none that I have known.
So this hearing, just to clarify, the hearing, you are recommending to the city council for a vacation?
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify, the, the, all of the planning.
Thank you. Angela always watching out for us. All right. So that ends the public portion of our planning commission meeting for the evening. You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like. It just gets more exciting from here. Did, did you get one of? All right. So in order of business for the planning commission, really quickly, we need to do our elections for the year for commission for chair and vice chair. So I've enjoyed it, enjoyed doing it the last couple of years, but if you guys want to go in a different direction, my feelings will not be hurt.
I nominate Jeff Parker to continue the chair.
Second. I'll third.
Aye.
You were railroaded.
Tangled with it.
Do you have the other nominations?
We also need to do a vice chair.
Yes.
Chair Parker is not here, so we have someone else back.
I would nominate Henry, Commissioner Walthius, if he would like to.
I'll second.
Okay. You want to go for the official vote, or do you? Okay. So all those in favor of myself, Commissioner Parker, remaining as chair, and Henry Walthius as vice chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. All right. One more year stuck with me. Yeah. Oh, there you go. Yeah. I would also like to thank Brian for coming to our planning commission to see how lively and exciting we are.
Can we ask him twenty questions?
That might be fun. Twenty sounds like a lot. Yeah.
Two?
Five. Well, can, can we invite Ryan to tell us a little bit about himself, so we can get to know him?
I'd have him come there so we can.
Oh, he's got his mic. Yeah.
It's nice to meet all of you. My wife and I and our family, we live in Albany. My background is in GIS. I've worked for the city of Salem, and I've also worked for Marion County. And this is my next adventure. I'm looking forward to working here. Thank you.
All right.
I'll brag a little bit more.
Yeah.
We're really excited to have Brian on board. Already hit the ground running. He's doing a great job. He's got some great GIS skills, which will really come into play with a lot of maps and excellent things that we have in mind. And also, I want to brag that he's a Marine Corps veteran and his wife is a Navy veteran.
Thank you.
Public service is obviously in the blood, and we're pleased to have them here.
Excellent. Well, thanks for taking a chance on us. We appreciate it. You do have some very large shoes to fill. But everyone here will be patient.
Hopefully he doesn't change his phone number.
Yeah. We know.
And you have his personal email.
We know where he lives. He's not going too far. All right. With all that behind us, do we have any staff updates, pending applications and such?
Always. Applications right now are pretty slim, which isn't a bad thing. Right now, we have the U S C, the food park. We should have the next meeting. And then shortly after that, you will see I'm bringing back some of the revisions and mistakes that I found in the film that we did. So those will be coming back also in the sixteenth, meeting on the sixteenth. And then we will also be doing the housing needs analysis. So, actually, I have that backwards. Housing needs analysis is the sixteenth, and the amendment will be the home and youth background. So those are the big things right now. Working through those. I think we caught all of the errors, but but it, you never know. I've gone through a lot of it. But hopefully it clears up a few things. We have also added a couple of things in just for to clear some foggy interpretations up that we've noticed since we've started using it. So hopefully we'll see that and see what we've been working on adding in. And then we'll have the new footprint. So pretty excited about that one. I have a lot of people interested in doing that. It'd be nice to get that one going. Other than that, we don't have, building has kind of slowed down a little bit. So it's giving us all the chance to catch up, catch your breath a little bit, get some other things that one of the applications that you will also be seeing is the city of Sweet Home and the school district, all of their properties have historically been zoned residential. And Ryan nicely made a map for me of all of those. We will be changing them all to public zones, so it'll be a zone change amendment. He was grateful enough to create a new map, so I don't have to travel all over the place and be come all out to get it. But we will have to notice, I have to notice freedom to leave from every single property. And then it'll be coming to all for zone change. It's just typical zone change, which is, it will save us from having to come here every time we do what we do now. We do a conditional use for property line adjustments for minor things. So my school, the district, and their own, their properties.
Will this also include the fire station and things of that nature? Will that be separate? Because we had the conditional use come before us for their storage building.
I thought that was sold to the district.
Right, no, no, I, I know. I'm, I'm just, we should, we should, we should talk to the fire district about their properties being included in this zone.
Incorporating them into the public.
They have, yeah, they have those, their two properties would benefit from it.
And, and the police department as well?
Well, the police department is, is the same, or, yeah, that, we've already included them. Fire district is a separate organization. We have to ask.
Are there any other public entities?
I mean, technically, the Army Corps and ODF and the ranger station, I mean, those could be considered in the public zone. The awkward, I mean, the thing is, is we don't really want to force it on them. The thing is, is with zone changes, typically, you wait for the, the property owner to initiate that. That way, they get the, if there's a benefit to the current zone, they could get that benefit. And then if they want to do something that is not allowed, and they want to change the zone, then they also have the option to zone change. So it gives them maximum flexibility. Because they're run by the federal government at the state, they're just not as responsive or as nimble as, as we are. And it's just kind of like, you know, they, the chances of them actually needing it are kind of slim. And even when they do make changes, their timelines are so long that they can, they can go through a lengthy process if they need to.
A lot harder.
We chose not to, not to really open that can of worms.
Understandable.
I think there's much more likely of things happening with the school district and the fire district and us than, than any of the other public organizations. Transportation system plan. Last time we, we mentioned, mentioned that product and asked for a volunteer, unfortunately, I don't have any real scheduling information yet. I can say this, this is a project that'll take at least the next year. And I don't, I think the, the public advisory committee would meet anywhere from once a month to once a quarter. It would not be more than once a month. So if that gives you any idea about the commitment. But we'd love to have somebody named to, to take, to include on, on our roster.
I know we had a couple of people interested at the last meeting, being a part of that. I mean, do you need a decision down to one person?
If, I, I think it, it's a, a commission issue of, of determining who you all want to represent the planning commission on this, on this committee. So probably would be best to have the, the full commission behind the individual.
And I know that our last meeting, both Commissioner Journey and Commissioner Melter expressed interest.
Attending and experience.
But if you would like to, I do have other commitments too, so I just don't know what phase it's going to be.
If you wish, you could, you could have one person designated and have the other as an alternate.
In case they can't make that.
That would be for schedule dates.
Would it be okay to have two people attend on alternate basis?
I don't think there would be any, it's not like we're gonna run out of space. I'm not sure there would be any harm in it.
So.
You know, these will all be public meetings, and so regardless of.
Any attendance anyway.
You know, you can be in attendance regardless. They will likely be here. There may be, depending on, there may be one at the community center at some point, but most of them are likely.
Okay. So do we want to officially declare Commissioner Melter and Journey as representatives to the transportation?
I don't know that a vote is necessary if you just want to buy consensus indicate that that's
I am good with it. And Mr. Branson, do you have any issues? Do you want to be a part of it? I mean, so I just want to make sure you don't think we're ignoring you down there. Okay. So we'll go ahead and leave it up to the two of you to decide who attends which meeting. Obviously, there'll be notification from Blair Angela as her meeting schedule.
That'll work.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, the goal is to have the committees figured out by the twenty-seventh, I think, if I passed this. So we're still putting together the technical committee and the public committee, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It's nice to have somebody in on all the meetings, so we get information firsthand. All right. If there's no other topics for discussion, go ahead and close the planning commission meeting for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I can't see that book. At seven thirty-one. It's like perfectly down, and I can't, it's lined up with a little groove in it.
Yep, I see.